Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 1st, 2021 meeting of the Gathersburg Planning Commission. We're in December. Welcome, everybody. Hope all is going well with you. The first item tonight is the approval of our minutes from November 3rd and November 17th. And with everyone present at both meetings, I think we can wrap those up in one motion. So if there aren't any questions or changes, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move there. We accept the minutes of November 3rd, 2021, and the minutes of November 17th, 2021 as read into the record.
There are seconded. Okay, so moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Hi.
Oh, Danny's not here. Okay, I will vote. Commissioner Cantrell.
Hi.
And I'll vote I as well. I should clarify, and that passes unanimously, by the way, both minutes. Sharon Cantrell is participating tonight as not all regular commissioners are present. Thank you for being here. Nanine, you'll be voting on all the regulatory matters and everything else that's on the agenda. Next up is our Record Plot Agenda, and we have two of those tonight. Greg, are you doing those or?
Sure. We have two Record Plots on the agenda tonight, RP-9111, that's 2021, and RP-9112, that's 2021. Plots 47, 48 for Crown. Both have been reviewed by staff and are ready for your approval tonight.
Great. Commissioners, any questions on the Record Plot Agenda?
No.
No? Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Record Plot Agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Hi.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. That passes unanimously. Next, we have a consent agenda item tonight, and it's for AFP-9123-2021. Outdoor tent for the downtown Crown Wine and Beer at 303 Copley Place in the MXD mixed-use development zone. This is an amendment to final site plan, but again, it's a consent item. Any questions on that? No? All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. So this is the vote. Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Hi.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Hi.
And although I as well, that passes unanimously. So far, we're 100% here, batting 100. All right, now we have a recommendation to the Board of Appeals, one item on that agenda tonight, and presenting from staff is Caroline Sidon. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening, everybody. This is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals on Amendment to Special Exception Case BOA 9105, 2021 for a rooftop telecommunications facility at 415 Russell Avenue, which is part of the Asbury Campus. And if we can pull up packet page 38. The subject property is Zoned R90 Medium Density Residential Zone, and pursuant to Section 24-295 of the City Zoning Ordinance, telecommunications facilities are permitted as a special exception in the R90 Zone, subject to the requirements of Section 24-167D2. The building in question is highlighted in the red box on this aerial. It's a part of the Asbury Campus on the southeast corner of Russell Avenue and Odin Hall. A telecommunications special exception, A477, was originally granted in this location in 1998, and there have been several amendments since then. Due to the proposed new location for the equipment cabinet, staff has determined that this application meets the definition of a major modification, which is why we're before the Planning Commission and why it's going to the Board of Appeals, because it requires an amendment to a special exception rather than a staff approval. I'll turn over the presentation now to Steve Kinley of Jacobs, who is here representing Dish Wireless, which is the telecom carrier that's seeking new antennas.
All right, very good. Thank you. Steve Kinley, it looks like you're on. There you go.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the planning board. My name is Stephen Kinley, and I'm here. I work for Jacobs Telecommunications. Hold on for one second. Let me start my video. There we go. How are you all tonight? As I was saying, my name is Steve Kinley, and I work for Jacobs Telecommunications, and I'm here representing Dish Wireless. Along with me is Faraz Ahmed, an RF engineer from Dish Wireless, who will take you through some propagation maps later on in the presentation. If we could go to slide 39, please. Next page. So I'm not sure if you're all familiar with Dish. Everyone knows Dish as the TV satellite provider, but we're here actually representing Dish Wireless. So what that means is Dish is making its debut as a wireless services provider, comparable to Verizon, T-Mobile, or AT&amp;T. So in order to do that, they've acquired spectrum and licenses from the FCC. With those licenses, they have to build out the sites in a certain amount of time, and this is one of the sites they want to build out. So by June of next year, they have to have 20% of the sites built, and by June of 2023, they have to have 70% of their sites built out. So right now, in this particular location at 415 Russell Avenue, the Diamond Apartments, a site here will cover the majority of the city of Gathersburg, so it's a very strong win for us. The height is optimal. As Caroline has stated, 415 Russell Avenue is an R90 cluster development. There is a special exception in place that was put there by Clearwire and then amended by Sprint. We had said AT&amp;T on the slide here, which is incorrect. So we're here to amend that special exception so that Dish can go get the rights to install up to six antennas. The goal is to install three immediately with three future. There will be also an equipment cabinet up there that will go on a steel platform. Everything that we do, obviously, will comply with our licensing and with the zone, with all the zoning that's in place. Now, the equipment, as you'll see later, is visible from the ground at all. If you go to the next slide, please. So what's the goal of Dish Wireless? Get this network up and running so we can start selling phones and making money. So with this site here, now, instead of having three providers, you'll have four providers in the market. Excuse me. As I stated, you know, we want to cover Gathersburg. There's a high population there, lots of phone users. Again, the other, the goals, possibilities for better service, less dropped connections, faster speeds, better support for working from home, virtual schooling, and other virtual services. Next slide, please. Faraz, can you discuss the propagation maps and what we're showing here?
Yeah, hi. I'm Faraz Ahmed. I've been working as an RF engineer for Dish Wireless. As Steve mentioned, the dishes, I'm going to give you a small introduction. Like Dish started recently in the wireless business, so started building the deployments for the wireless towers using colocations. And so to provide the optimal coverage, we need a site like every two to five miles. To, for example, if you see this map right now, this is a map being, we use like, as an RF engineer, we use a planning tool called Planet to run the simulation, to run the predictions of how the coverage is going to look. This is like 95% approximately what actually the coverage will be. So if you see the Gathersburg area, if you see the white spot, that portion is where, like, it's called a coverage hole. Like, for example, the green area is where you get the optimum coverage. The orange is where you get the coverage, but you might get a lower speed, or you might have a weak signal. Like, for example, if you're standing in a white area and you have a cellphone, and you try to talk to the tower, you won't have any bar on the phone. You won't be able to make any voice call or any data session. You won't be able to browse or any, you won't be able to access YouTube or anything. But like, if you move closer to the site, and if you're in an area where it's orange, you will have few, like, instead of five bars, you might have three bars, four bars. You will have a better coverage, and you can be able to access the network and make a voice call and all. And then if you're in a green area, you will have a better speed, and you will have a better throughput. And then, like, for example, if you're getting one megabytes in an orange area, then you will get a 10 megabytes in a green area. So it's the, usually, the site, we like, covers within like, one mile or mostly goes even to five mile, depending upon if you're in suburban area, in a rural area, or in a downtown area, depending upon the path of, do you have a line of sight and how good the line of sight is. So in this map, we are trying to show that we need a site in that location in the middle where you see the circle. So we need a site to have a, like, to have an overlapping coverage where we can, the neighboring sites are like, one mile towards the east and more than one mile towards the east and more than one mile towards the west, and same case of the north and the south. So if you go to the next slide. Yeah, so this is when we put a site with a height 112, using the azimuth 0, 120, and 270. So we see the coverage in that area. So we cover a lot of area of the Gathersburg. For example, the alpha sector, which is to the two shooting towards north, will cover the Lake Forest Mall. And then we have schools, and it covers like, since it's a mixed zone, so it will cover like, all the commercial residential or residential area in this Gathersburg. So for example, the, on the south, we have two school, middle and elementary Gathersburg school, right? So those two schools will be covered by the beta sector. Same case, on the west side, we have a highway 270, and we have the local highways, local roads. So this area, we need a, we need a site to provide a better coverage once we're going to fully launch, like, for example, Dish is right now in a phase where they're trying to build out nationwide sites. So mostly, we're focusing on the metropolitan areas, like suburban areas, where we can get the dense population, so we can provide, right now, your target is coverage, not the capacity. So once, and then from there on, so FCC is mandated Dish to provide 70% coverage by June 2023, and then 20% of the coverage by June 2022, which is next year. So right now, we are in a phase, we're trying to build the sites to provide the optimal coverage. So this, we need a site, as I mentioned, every 1.5 plus miles to, so we can have, we can have a coverage for the general public, for the subscribers. Maybe we can move to the next slide. So this is, yeah, go ahead.
See. Thank you, Faraz. I appreciate that. What I'd like you to do, actually, if you could bring me to page 65.
Okay.
So as Caroline said earlier, what we are working to do here today is we would like a positive recommendation from you to go to the Board of Appeals in order to amend our special exception. In order to do that, we need to comply with the standards of the code. So if you go to the next page, please. So number one there pretty much says, you know, a telecommunications facility may be installed on rooftop of a building on a privately owned land that's over 30 feet. When this particular case, we're installing at 112 on a rooftop of 116. Little I too, telecommunications facilities may be attached to a freestanding monopole or tower on a privately owned land. That one's not applicable as we're going on a rooftop. Number three, antennas on privately owned land are limited to the following types and dimensions. We're within those dimensions. We are doing proposed panel antennas that are six feet in height and 20 inches wide, where what's allowed is up to eight feet and two feet wide. For an unmanned equipment building or cabinet included as part of its communications facility on privately owned land must not exceed 560 feet or 12 feet in height. The cabinet we're proposing to install is 85 square feet and six feet in height, obviously complying there. Page 67. Please. On 67, little I five there, that's private, that's public property. We aren't installing on public property. So the next three are NA as well. If we go to page 68, please. Six there, all such telecommunications facilities and new telecommunications facility support structures shall be located and designed so as to minimize visual impact. I'll walk you through the propagation or the photo simulations that we did, and you'll see from the photos that because where we're located, because of the height and because we're back on the roof, none of the equipment is is able to be seen, but we are agreeing to paint the antennas to match as well. No signs are permitted. We aren't proposing any signs. Number eight, no lights are permitted. We don't have any lighting as well. The next three apply to if you're building a new tower, so those are not applicable as well. 11, every telecommunication, next page, 69, please. Every telecommunications facility must be removed at the cost of owner operated facility when a telecommunications facility is no longer in use. Disagreeing to do that, should they not use the facility once it's already built and up and running? Then the standards under number two. Again, we've gone through the list here. Much of it is not applicable. If you go to the next page, 70F. Again, as we discussed, this deals with the height of the structure. We're going at 112 on a 116-foot building with penthouse. Letter G. An event, a telecommunications antenna is proposed to be located on the facade of the building. We're not going on the facade. We're going in the penthouses, which are back off the edge of the roof. H, in any residential zone, Board of Appeals must find that the equipment building or cabinet does not exceed 560 square feet and 12 feet in height. We discussed that. We're 85 square feet and six feet in height. All right, so if you can go to packet page 50, please. So what we had our engineers do is actually take two photos from Russell Avenue. Page 50 is the first one, and you'll see that you will not see the facility on this photo. And 51, again, is another one from Russell Avenue, another angle. Again, the facility will not be visible here as well. And then the last photo we provided was from Annandale, Annandale Hall, Annandale Hall, Annandale Avenue. I'll take your word for it. All right, on this one as well, the facility is not visible. So again, at this point, you know, I'd like to summarize what we're looking for is for a positive recommendation towards the Board of Appeals. Faraz and myself are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. You know what you might want to do real quick before we wrap up your presentations? Go to page, packet page 49, is the elevation where you actually show the antenna that you are proposing. I know the photo simulations screen, yeah, exactly. And what this doesn't show necessarily is anything else that's co-located up there at this point, right? So there's probably some other things up there. Already.
Yes, there is. Let me bring you to a rooftop drawing from the top, and that will show where everything is.
Okay, what page is that?
Let me see. See here, locate. Let's see.
47 or 46?
Now, if we could go to 90.
Oh, okay.
The full set of drawings are farther in the packet. If we could go to, actually, it's.
I think your slide 40, page 47, might show what you're looking for.
Okay, 40 or 80 has the same. So when you look at this drawing, you can see on the penthouse in the middle of the building.
Give them just a sec, give them just a second.
This is tech team. I'm hearing a lot of pages. I just want to make sure I've got the right one for you. What page number are we looking for?
Can you go to 80, please?
Yes, hang on one second.
So if you look towards the top left of the page there, you'll see the existing antennas are all on that penthouse. I'm not sure how familiar you are with cellular technology and how it works, but in order to cover a full circle 360 degrees, there's three azimuths that need to be covered. So what you'll see is you'll see three groups of antennas typically. So if you're driving down the highway and you see a tower, you'll see on the top, there's a triangle, and that triangle, each triangle is a different carrier.
Yeah.
In this case, Sprint is in the top corner on the penthouse, and then they're on the right side next to our antennas, and then they're on the front of the building. I'll call it the bottom of the penthouse. They're all there. Where our antennas, we have one azimuth, one sector covered there on that same penthouse that they're on, and then we have our other two sectors down on the next penthouse. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yep, good. Thank you. All right. Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicants team? Right now? Okay. Tech team, do you want to, actually, Caroline, let me just verify. We're doing public hearing tonight, correct? You're on mute. You're on mute, Caroline.
Yes, you can take public comment.
Good. Tech team, would you play the, play the video, please?
If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right, thank you. And to remind everybody who just watched that, that's for this application only. Comments on future, on applications and plans being looked at later in the agenda will do the same. We'll break in with the same message and allow comment then. So I'm not seeing hands up on this one, so I want to go ahead and move forward with the recommendation from staff. Caroline?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings and recommendation, recommend approval of special exception BOA 9105, 2021, with five conditions that are listed in your package that will also be included in a draft resolution of approval for the Board of Appeals. I would like to make an amendment, actually, to condition number one, that there's some language in there that doesn't relate specifically to the Dish application. So what I would propose is that the condition number one read, "At such time as Dish Wireless and its successors and assigns ceases to use this facility, the antennas and associated equipment shall be removed by the applicant at the applicant's expense."
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the whole, the whole purpose of what our guidelines are is to make sure that we do leverage existing high places and places where the antenna are going to be located with other, other many, other service providers. And this, this does that, as I think, imagined. So any questions on the recommendation or comments? Yeah, Lloyd, please.
Yeah, just a quick question. It's a technical question regarding the technology, the evolution of technology over the next maybe two years. We've got a date here of December 8th, 2023. Should the equipment change or the technology change between now and the time you put up the new facility? Or during that period? Do we have to, do you have to come back to us? How does this work, Greg? Is there a technical revision that has to occur if the equipment, physical equipment changes and the way it's conducted on top of that roof? Or do they just go ahead and change the equipment and doesn't have to come back to Planning Commissioner or to anybody in the city?
I can answer that. If it's a equipment swap out, we have the ability to do that as a staff approval, but they do, if they do change antennas or change equipment cabinets, make any add to antennas, all of that can be done by staff. Well, in fact, most of what's, what we've been reviewing over the last few years has been, we've been able to do at the staff level because we differentiated between what we would consider a major modification and a minor modification. So this was considered major because of the location of the equipment cabinet. It was in a different location than the equipment that's already on that roof. Otherwise, it wouldn't have even come to you in the first place. So anytime they swap out equipment that's already been approved, we just do that at the staff level.
Thank you, Caroline. I appreciate that. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for staff, on staff recommendations? All right. Commissioners, any concerns with the proposal moving forward?
No, not, not at all.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, we have recommendation from staff to make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals with a modified, or excuse, one modified condition. There's four, five conditions total. But number one being modified. Any other concerns with the conditions or any recommended modifications? I didn't. Okay. All right. So if there are any other comments, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings or recommendations, I move that Planning Commission recommend approval, a special exception BOA 9105-2021, with the five conditions as read into the record.
All right.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Hi.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Hi.
And I'll vote I as well. Thank you all very much. Good luck. Hope you get, hope you get the coverage you're looking for.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to our site plan agenda, and the first site plan is for SP-9104-2021, a two-story addition at 23 Seater Avenue in the R90 Medium Density Residential Zone. This is the final site plan review. And presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. So staff is for you to present final site plan application SP-9104-2021. The app is requesting approval to construct a two-story addition in the rear of the existing home located at 23 Seater Avenue. The property is Zoned R90 and is located in the Observatory Heights subdivision. This application is brought before the Planning Commission pursuant to Section 24-168A of the City Code. Single-family dwelling units with no proof site plan to add one or more stories or increase the total square footage of the structure by more than 50% is required to submit a new site plan application. Pursuant to Section 24-227.4 of the City Code, this district commission had conducted a courtesy review on the addition on November 23rd of 2021. And tech team, can I have number 142, please? And I will kick it off to Mike Kavanaugh, who's the architect for the project, who's going to do the presentation this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mike, I think you're on mute. You're on mute, Mike.
Looking on mute. I just probably last time. Can you hear me now?
All right, you're good.
Very good. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to make our presentation to you, the planning board. We appreciate that very much. My name is Michael Kavanaugh. My firm is MC Design Build. Our, my owners and clients are neighbors of mine right around the corner from us, Jeremy and Jeremy Carball and Mary. my owners and clients are uh, neighbors of mine right around the corner from us, Jeremy and Jeremy Carball and Mary Huntsberry. Um, they have a adorable little cottage style home here and um, they wish to increase the size of it to bring it up from a two-bedroom home to a three-bedroom home with um, another bathroom and then upgrade the um uh, family room facilities that are currently in um, pretty bad shape. We had a structural engineer take a look at the uh, the first floor rear addition that we were hoping to build on top of, but that foundation was deemed to be pretty much um, outdated, unsafe and needing to be replaced. Um, so that's why we decided to um, consider a two-story addition, brand-new, all-new construction uh, attached to the uh, rear of the home. Uh, we did, as you know, have the uh, HTC take a look at things. Uh, I think they were pretty favorable about what we proposed. And um, I think staff is pretty uh, favorable with what we've proposed to do thus far. And um, I'm just hoping that uh, you guys all feel the same way. I don't know if you want, need to go through additional um, pages or views or.
Why don't you go ahead and present, present the project, kind of the scope of it and 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 what it, what you're proposing for the for the addition?
Okay, is it possible to go? I don't know where, what page is where, so I forgive me, because I'm not uh, I don't know how to go from page, say, one forty is where it starts. Could we start at page one forty?
I would say just start these up, these photos of the existing home, just kind of go over uh, existing home and go to next page, next page.
Okay, so obviously, this is page one forty-two. So this is a view of the front of the house. Obviously, it has a nice exterior uh, look to. It's got some uh, nifty pebble dash stucco that was, I I believe, an add-on to the original clapboard siding that was there. Um, the the clients want to maintain the look of the home, and I think uh, I think we've done that pretty successfully. Can we go to like one forty-three? Please. This is the rear of the home where the uh, the addition I described, that's um, actually probably a series of additions and maybe as many as three or four different additions were put onto the back of the original home. Um, and this is the portion that we wish to uh, remove. Uh, page one forty-four, please. I feel like I'm on a game show. Um, this is a side view of the home, uh, the chimney and the stucco there, that that original house will remain intact. Uh, you can see a garage, a detached garage that was built a few years back. And the addition will pop up back there on the um, left rear, left rear corner. Uh, page one forty-five, please. This is a drone shot of the original home. That's the um, the basic shape of the uh, original structure. The addition is on the bottom of the page. Uh, next page, please. Here's another overall shot, kind of gives you a a view of the uh, one, two, three different additions that uh, we wish to replace. Um, our new addition will be very similar in footprint, if not identical, but we do um, I hope to have a a cantilevered uh, stair tower bay on the right side, and we add a little bit of additional space to the left side of the footprint of the um, existing addition. Next page, please. Uh, this is our site plan, which tries to make sense of what I'm trying to say. Um, you can see the dark gray shape is the original additions that we wish to uh, remove. And the lighter gray is that additional footprint that we're adding uh, to it. Uh, we also sort of indicate where the second floor uh, cantilever is out from the first floor by about two feet, and then we're going to do a um, a nifty uh, second floor balcony that overlooks the backyard and the gardens. Next page, please. Uh, here's a view of the front of the house from the street from Cedar Avenue, and you can see the addition um, popping up there in the back of it. Uh, you can um, also note that the HDAC wanted us to add some additional fenestration windows or something to break up the siding planes that we had proposed. So since then, we um, are going to add an additional window there on the right side, which matches the other windows that we're using, and we're going to add probably a very similar uh, gable vent that is already um, you know, uh, on the front part of the house. So we're kind of just copying those elements and uh, putting them right there. Next page, please. Um, this shows you sort of amassing study, uh, material studies uh, of the original house in the addition. Um, the house is uh, the both the light gray is the stucco. Uh, the horizontal clapper siding is what we've proposed in the back. We're going to use some vertical board on battening type of vertical siding on the addition on the second floor. And um, that's how it looks. That that the new window that I just talked about is that one that you see um, and that, how do I describe it? It's that one that's uh, on the front-facing wall, which you really can't tell which is front, but it just ties in with the other windows that we have proposed. Next page, please. Here is the uh, left side view. You can see that stair tower uh, element that I talked about, because we're going to um, we're going to take out a very dangerous set of basement stairs and attic stairs and replace them with a new co-conforming stairway that will now go all the way from the existing basement level all the way up to the new second floor. Uh, and that's what occurs in that whole stair tower, the stacked windows and the window down below the 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 figure that you see there is Jeremy. So to the right of Jeremy is that uh, stair tower window that leads to the um, stairway to the basement. Um, next page, please. Here's a rear elevation of the all-new construction. Uh, you can see a little bit of the existing home back there on the right-hand side of the sheet, the existing chimney. All those elements and brick will remain as is uh, the color scheme that we are showing right now. Color-wise, we um, I I don't think we've determined what it's going to be. I have, I I I have an inkling that it may become a light blue-gray kind of uh, color instead of this uh, gray and tan. Um, not quite sure, but we're studying that so far. But anyway, this gives you a sense of the windows and fenestration and the doors and the balcony uh, of the um, back view of the new two-story addition. Next page.
While while you're there, just this is a good, as good as any place to to kind of ask the question, because you've got a great um, illustration of what I'm getting at. You show, I think, three different sidings plus trim here. What what are those materials?
Uh, the the materials of the trim, I'm sorry?
Well, you're showing three different siding materials and trim. So what are, what are all those materials? What are what are the materials?
Uh, I can start us at top gable there if you like. Um, I mean, that's a probably a cement fiber hardy plank uh, product, uh, you know, one of their cedar shake-like type of uh, shingle materials. And then this is their board-on-batten vertical uh, cement fiber product. And then this is just a typical clapper siding that has a, I guess we have, I don't quite remember, I'm sorry, but this is either a four or six-inch exposure clapper. And since we're talking about the clapper siding, uh, Jeremy has expressed an interest in um, removing the stucco of the original home and removing the old clapper siding that's underneath of it. And so by doing that, we're going to discover what is there, clapper siding wise. Um, and then we may try to uh, match that or, you know, go back to the original clapper siding exposure and type that was uh, on the home originally. And the reason to do that is that they they wish to um, insulate the exterior walls of their home. And then put down and put new finishes.
All right, and then the shingles are asphalt?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they'll probably match what's already there that you saw in that drone shot from up above. That roof is only four or five years old.
Sure, sure, okay.
Just to be clear, though, we're not, you don't have vinyl siding anywhere here. It's all fiber cement.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Good answer.
Good, I got lucky. Okay, can we continue?
Yeah, please.
All right, thank you. Uh, well, I guess next page, please. Uh, I think this, this is like, takes us to our staff recommendations. I don't think you want me to go through this, but.
No. Um, you know, it's interesting. Um, I thought there was a view in your pack, in the packet when I was looking through it that showed from the street, um, because one of the things that that you just showed didn't didn't um, in, I'm sort of giving you credit here, the 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 addition set way back, so it doesn't have the prime prominence on the street that your front elevation does, which is you know, more two-dimensional thing. And I thought you had a view of the model down at eye level. All your, all your views were up sort of at gutter level or above.
I think it's there somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, I, it was something you might want to just show real quick to be sure that those watching and um, anybody who's interested.
It's packet page one sixty-one.
Please go to packet page one sixty-one, please.
Yeah, so an upper view and and just, I I just want to make sure that the commissioners and anybody watching understood the the relative sightlines in in doing something like this. It doesn't look as tall from the street as the the front elevation does.
That's, that's very correct. Uh, and that's why I tried to incorporate some of these views to show that what you're really going to realize from street level, and their house sits up uh, from the street elevation by about three and a half, four feet. So you have, you may not see the addition at all from street level.
Right.
It's it's, it's really going to kind of disappear, which was something that was kind of important to Mary and Jeremy, was they wanted to preserve the uh, the the look of their home, because they um, they saw, they loved it and they bought it.
Good. All right. Great, thank you. All right, uh, commissioners, any questions for the applicants team?
Uh, yeah, can I ask a question for?
Yeah, sure, jump in.
So uh, packet page one forty-nine, um, that's a different elevation on the side of the house. Um, I noticed that there is a window that's missing. Um, I'm not sure if that was um, I I saw something about in in some of the right, the writing um, and recommendations about windows. Um, do you see where I'm talking about the the um, on the stucco side to the right?
Stucco side to the right.
On the the first floor, the addition.
Uh huh.
Um, I just didn't know, is there a a window missing or is that um, is that, I I just was wondering why there's no confirmation windows?
So if I understand your que- question, you're you're asking, is there a window missing from like the first floor?
Yeah, the first floor.
Rear addition area there. Yeah, we studied that. There's some behind that wall is a is a kitchen cabinetry and stuff like that. And then that wall, the bump-out bay there is is um, is to provide uh, more space for the uh, family room as well as a media center for a TV. So the blank wall there is more uh, proposed to allow us for a a a large wall plane for a large flat-screen TV. And it's also very close to the, you know, side property line of their neighbors who already have a big fence and all sorts of stuff. So there's really no desirous view or anything uh, wanted from that uh, point of view.
Okay.
Just add, there is a similar wall on our neighbor's house at that same point, too. Uh, so um, uh, it's not much of a view there. Uh, we also uh, currently have that side heavily landscaped and plan to do the same uh, here as well.
Lovely. It is really lovely.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Um, and this would be the time for public comment. So tech team, would you play our
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right. That seemed to work yet again. Um, and I'm not seeing any hands at this point. So why don't we go ahead and um, Jasmine, if you would do the recommendation, I'll keep an eye on this list in case anybody does raise their hand.
Um, so staff recommends that the planning commission, based on exhibits submitted, applicant's testimony, the staff report findings, recommendation grant SP dash one nine one oh four dash twenty twenty-one final site plan finding in conformance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-one of the city's zoning ordinance, one condition.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on the recommendation? All right. Well, let me start with a comment with the with the general. A nice work team, both uh, Mr. Kavanaugh and uh, and and to the, to the homeowners themselves. The the um, the concept of it, I'm staring at, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at you. I'm looking at the presentation, but the 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 fundamental concept of preserving the nature and the character and the presence of the original, almost historic, not not technically historic, but you know, um, the 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 home that's just facing the street is really a a nicely, nicely done thing and you know, moving a lot of the new addition to the back and doing what you need to do to make it a, make it a modern home is is perfectly understandable and actually very appropriate, because you want to you want to keep these these homes relevant um, with with changing lifestyles and changing expectations. So nice work on that. And um, and thank you for bringing forward something that uses, you know, quality materials and and sort of a thoughtful use of of massing and roof lines and things to make this all work together. So I I don't have any real criticism for this. I just want to, you know, recognize this is a great project and um, will be good for the for the city and 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 a nice addition to the neighborhood. Commissioners, anything, anything you want to add?
Just second what you just said, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a it's an asset to the uh, to the community and um, perhaps we'll consider it in the future for uh, some of our uh, future awards.
Yeah, we have to get back to that, don't we? We've got to get that on the calendar again. Maybe this will be the reason. We finally have something to give an award to. Maybe we can. No, um, no, nice work. So um, yeah, put your thumbs down.
I would also echo that. I think it's lovely. I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We certainly appreciate that.
Okay, if there are any other, Phil, did you want to add anything or?
You've all captured it very well.
All right. So with that, we have a recommendation from staff on the approval. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, uh, I move that the planning commission, based on the submitted, the applicant's find uh, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant SP nine one oh four dash twenty twenty-one final site plan finding in conformance with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-one of the city zoning ordinance with one condition.
Second.
Karen, you got it, yours.
Second and squared. All right, it's moved in second. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Fisher Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously and good luck, everyone. Great project.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Do for the city.
Um, all right, next up is uh, another site plan on our site plan agenda. This is for SP dash eight nine three three dash twenty twenty-one, construction of a five thousand sixty square foot wall, our retail building and automobile filling station at four oh five South Frederick Avenue, the CD corridor development zone. This is final site plan and presenting again from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Welcome back, Jasmine.
Have a packet page number three fifty, please. So, uh, good evening again. Um, staff, before you present final site plan application SP dash eighty-nine eighty-three dash twenty twenty-one. Uh, this application is based on schematic development plan application SDP dash eighty-one seventy-four dash twenty nineteen, uh, which was approved by the Maryland City Council on October seventh, twenty nineteen. As shown on the screen, the subject property is located at four oh five South Frederick Avenue. Dapton's requesting approval for a five thousand uh, sixty-square-foot retail building for Wawa and an accessory automobile filling station. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section twenty-four dash one sixty-eight, uh, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. Uh, the applicants also requested approval for Forest Conservation Plan EMV dash eighty-two fifty-four dash twenty nineteen pursuant to section uh, or chapter twenty-two of the city code. Uh, staff would um, like to note that um, after the agenda was posted, um, we have received five additional correspondence that came in, and those were forwarded to the planning commission. Uh, those documents were also included in the agenda packet this evening. And they are exhibits eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four in the record. Uh, tech team, can I have the next page, please? And I will have Philip Hummel, who's the attorney uh, for the project, to do the presentation this evening.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Philip Hummel. I'm a land use attorney with the firm of Miles and Stockbridge. Um, here with me today is my colleague Barbara Sears, and we are land use counsel for applicant seventeen eighty-eight holdings. Uh, next slide, please. So here is our uh, development team. Uh, the owner and applicant of the subject property, four oh five South Frederick Avenue, is seventeen eighty-eight holdings. The anticipated tenant is Wawa. I'm our firm is land use council. Uh, we also have our civil engineers, Bowler, who I believe is on the phone with us tonight. And also our traffic engineer, Will Zide of Grove Slate. Uh, next slide, please. So what you see before you on the left is a vicinity map aerial, and on the right is more of a close-in shot of the subject property. Again, this subject property is owned by seventeen eighty-eight. It's addressed as four or five South Frederick Avenue. Contains approximately one point eight four acres of land. This currently improved with a one-story eight thousand nine hundred and twenty square foot commercial building that was last used as an antique store and real estate office. Uh, the project has frontage on Frederick Avenue, Maryland three fifty-five, which is a major arterial road that links Gaithersburg with Rockville and Bethesda to the south and Germantown and Frederick to the north. Uh, the subject property is zone CD corridor development. So as you see on the right, on the parcel aerial uh, to the northwest of the property is four oh one South Frederick Avenue, which is a residential structure that's used as a professional office. Uh, southwest of the property is the Holbrook Center, which is a shopping center. which is a shopping center that contains several commercial uses, restaurants, beer and wine store, personal services, offices, and a convenience market. Uh both these abutting properties, four oh one South Frederick and the Holbrook Center are also both zone CD corridor development. Uh the intersection of the Holbrook Center driveway, MD three fifty-five and Education Boulevard, which you can kind of see on the right where the crosswalks are, that is a signalized intersection. On the left, uh you can see the property is about half a mile or about a ten-minute walk from the heart of Old Town Gaithersburg. It's an even shorter walk to City Hall. Uh along uh three fifty-five, there's a wide range of uh uses within the vicinity of the property along established commercial corridors and include shopping centers, restaurants, personal services, professional offices, restaurants, multifamily apartments, houses of worship, community facilities, and schools. Next slide, please. So what you see before you is just to show you where we've been. Uh on October seven, twenty nineteen, as Ms. Forbes mentioned, the city council approved the underlying schematic development plan, which is SDP eight one seven four twenty nineteen. Uh the resolution from the city council approving the uh SDP is included in the record as exhibit two. The SDP approved the redevelopment of the subject property with a one-story, five thousand sixty square foot convenience retail building with accessory filling station with six double-sided gas pumps. The SDP also approved associated parking waivers and a tree removal variance. The SDP was subject to three conditions. Condition one was providing an additional tree island in the parking lot. Condition two was examining the sidewalk connectivity along the south side of the property near the Holbrook Center. And condition three was confirming the adequacy of traffic queuing and stacking. Uh after approval, the SDP was challenged in court and eventually affirmed in its entirety by the Court of Special Appeals of Maryland by unreported opinion that was dated March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And with its mandate that was issued thereafter on May third, twenty twenty-one, and those are included in the record as exhibits nineteen and twenty. Uh in accordance with uh the Court of Special Appeals decision, the Circuit Court from Montgomery County affirmed the SDP approval in its entirety on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and that's exhibit fourteen in the record. On July twenty-seventh of this year, seventeen eighty-eight filed this site plan application to implement the approved and affirmed SDP. Next slide, please. So what you see before you is a rendered site plan. Uh this illustrates that the site plan does comply with the approved SDP. We have the five thousand sixty square foot convenience retail building and accessory automobile filling station with six double-sided gas pumps. As was mentioned during the SDP, this number of gas pumps is on the smaller side for Wawa. Um the site plan also illustrates the vehicular connection to the Holbrook Center that allows entering and exiting the property via the signalized intersection at MD three fifty-five and Education Boulevard. Uh the site plan also illustrates the right-in, right-out access point that's been shifted from the north from the existing curb cut to allow increased separation from the signalized intersection at Holbrook Center. And if you look in the center where there's a tree, uh that's the incorporation of the tree island that was conditioned in the SDP. And staff has confirmed that that satisfies condition one of the SDP. Uh the site plan also shows the reconstruction of the existing northbound through fifty-five U-turn lane that will be reconstructed to lengthen the left turn lane on southbound through fifty-five to increase storage from three cars, roughly three cars today, to ten cars in the future. Uh the site plan, I just wanted to highlight some features of the site plan that maintains features from the approved SDP to promote compatibility with surrounding development. So as you'll see, the fuel canopy is located closer to three fifty-five with the convenience retail building in the rear. The rear of the building is set back about a hundred and eleven feet from the rear property line. There's a significant landscape buffer in the rear of the property. It's approximately sixty-three feet deep and two hundred and ten feet long. It runs along the entire length of the lot. Uh it's similar in uh scale to the buffer that's provided at the adjacent Holbrook Center and other existing buildings along the Frederick Avenue corridor. I was testified during the SDP, a landscape buffer of this size and extent is a unique feature for a Wawa location. Also, along the rear property line is a six-foot-tall board-on-board privacy fence. Uh as confirmed during the SDP, again, to enhance compatibility, you'll see on the site plan that there's no rear customer entrance, no rear parking spaces, no tables for dining outside the store, also no tables for dining inside the store, no car wash, no automobile repair facilities, no parking for large tractor-trailer trucks, no high-speed diesel fueling facilities for larger trucks. Again, these were all features uh to ensure compatibility. Uh the building is also about one story in height, about thirty-three feet tall at its highest point, which is shorter than the adjacent uh two-story uh Holbrook Center. Uh the landscaping with new plantings along through fifty-five, which you can see in the rendered site plan, will create a welcoming appearance along a prominent commercial corridor, as well as you can see the rear plantings uh to bolster the landscape buffer. Uh not shown on the site plan, but worth noting is that all lighting fixtures will have full cutoff with LED bulb bulbs, and that's to uh again, ensure compatibility with the surrounding community. Uh the project also includes state-of-the-art stormwater management facilities where none exist today. And as we'll get into in greater detail in this presentation, the project system of sidewalks have been further enhanced from the approved SDP uh in response to uh condition of that uh approval. So can we move to the next slide, please? So this slide shows the uh circulation, uh both vehicular circulation patterns and pedestrian uh patterns for uh the proposed site plan. Uh the applicant has conducted additional traffic analysis in accordance with condition three of the SDP to confirm the adequacy of the proposed queuing and stacking. You can find that as exhibit five in the record. And staff has concurred with applicant's analysis and conclusions uh that there is indeed adequate uh queuing and stacking incorporated in the site plan. So let's first focus on vehicular circulation. Um as mentioned before, but also shown on this uh plan, the vehicular connection to Holbrook Center driveway that will allow for accessing the uh the signal, the traffic signal at uh MD three fifty-five. Again, you still see the right-in, right-out new uh access point on uh the three fifty-five frontage. Uh the drive aisles are sufficiently wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic throughout the site. And uh there are a truck turning movement diagrams in the record uh that illustrate that there's a ability to accommodate turning movements, delivery trucks, fire trucks, trash trucks, and passenger vehicles. Um it was also earlier mentioned, uh but not shown uh exactly on this plan is that the uh extension of the left turn lane into the site, again, increasing storage from about three cars today to ten cars in the future. So just to focus now on pedestrian circulation. So the improved pedestrian access in this site plan is provided via sidewalks in the pattern that you see. It's roughly shaped like a square. So the first side of the square is along through fifty-five. There's a one-foot minimum buffer now between the curb and the sidewalk. That buffer extends to about four point four feet at its widest point. Uh another side of the square is along the property's northern boundary, which you see on plan uh left uh side of the sheet. Uh that provides an ADA compliant pathway. And the other uh sidewalk is along the property's southern boundary to the right. Uh the intent here is to lead pedestrians from through fifty-five to the interior of the site, past parking spaces, past the field canopy, and past the primary vehicular circulation area that's illustrated in order to keep pedestrians separate from vehicles and reduce opportunities for conflict between the two. And then the fourth side of the square, the furthest to um the top there, uh which is the west, uh is a sidewalk that leads pedestrians from the perimeter sidewalks uh to the retail store by ninety-degree angle connections and clearly marked crosswalks. Uh so and also shown in this sheet, uh consistent with previous feedback, there's also a new sidewalk. Uh it's shown in orange closer to three fifty-five that will connect the parking spaces that are closest to fifty-five with the sidewalk along the property's southern boundary. Uh next slide, please. So condition two of the SDP required applicant to examine the sidewalk connectivity along the south side of the subject property between the subject property and the Holbrook Center. Staff challenged applicant's team to undertake a comprehensive review of pedestrian connectivity in the site plan phase. And this review has resulted in a number of enhancements from the approved SDP that are now incorporated in the site plan to improve pedestrian circulation. So on the left, which is the uh screenshot of the approved SDP, each one of those numbers, numbers one through five, represents an enhancement from the approved SDP as it relates to pedestrian connectivity that's now included in the site plan. And we'll discuss each of those in detail. Uh applicant's uh pedestrian connect uh connectivity memo, which also provides a good deal of background on these changes, is included in the record as exhibit four. Uh next slide, please. So we'll start with uh the sheet shows three of the five changes. Uh the first is item one, which is a it's just the uh addition of the landscape buffer along MD three fifty-five. So a a one-foot buffer has been added to approximately one hundred linear feet of sidewalk along the property's MB three fifty-five frontage. This would be consistent with existing conditions, moving sending the property on both sides of MD three fifty-five, both to the north and south of the property, as well as the other side of the street. And this was acknowledged by uh staff in their staff report. An applicant did examine pushing the sidewalk further back from the curb in this area to increase the buffer, but this wasn't feasible to the grading in the area, utility and stormwater facility conflicts and constraints. Applicant did consult with SHA, which agreed that the one-foot buffer, agreed with the one-foot buffer and noted that it was infeasible to provide a wider buffer in this area due to the existing utility and traffic signal equipment. And you can find uh that in exhibit eleven in the record. Um now, as a result of that change, there will be a minimum one-foot buffer along the entirety of the properties uh MD three fifty-five frontage between the sidewalk and the curb. Uh the second item, the circle two, item two, that is the extension of the sidewalk along the property's southern boundary to provide a continuous onsite pedestrian connection from MD three fifty-five to the entrance of the retail store. Uh consistent with uh the condition from the SDP, this now provides a more direct pedestrian passage by eliminating the need for pedestrians to cross to the adjacent Holbrook Center, walk up the Holbrook Center, then cross back to the property to reach the front of the retail store. And uh due to the steep grade of the property in this portion of the site, which is up to thirty-three percent, upstairs will need to be incorporated in the sidewalk connection. Uh but as a reminder, there is an ADA compliant pedestrian path along the property's northern boundary. Item five uh is the added sidewalk along those parking spaces that are closest to MD three fifty-three fifty-five. Uh this sidewalk will allow drivers parking in these spaces to use to use the extended sidewalk connection along the property's southern boundary for accessing the convenient retail store. This will also help reduce conflicts between vehi- vehicles and pedestrians. Uh next slide, please. So two more changes, uh enhancements from the SDP as it relates to pedestrian connectivity. And we've modified uh the sidewalk intersections with the drive aisles at these locations to provide connections at ninety-degree angles. Now, this has a number of benefits. Um one benefit is that it reduces the length of the crosswalks across the drive aisles from the approved SDP. So if you look at item three, that reduced the crosswalk length on the ADA pathway from about forty-one and a half feet to about twenty-three point seven feet, which is a forty-three percent reduction. That's a considerable reduction. Um for item four, the uh crosswalk was reduced on the southern boundary sidewalk by five feet from thirty-two feet to twenty-seven feet, which is a fifteen percent decrease, so less in magnitude than um um yeah, the the uh item three uh crosswalk, but still a significant reduction. Uh another benefit of these changes is that improves visibility for pedestrians crossing at the marked crosswalks. So when you uh put all these improvements together, these five items, these modifications to the pedestrian access from the approved SDP and now made in the final site plan will improve the safety, efficiency, uh pedestrian connectivity. We can move to slide ten, please. Next page. What you see here is the landscape plan and as shown in the table on the right, the project will provide double the required amount of landscape coverage, which required is fifteen percent, and we will be providing thirty percent. This is achieved through, among other things, the inclusion of the approximately sixty-three foot deep uh landscape buffer in the rear of the property. It's again, it's about two hundred and ten feet long as well as landscaped areas along the properties MB three fifty-five frontage, again, to create that welcoming presence uh that was mentioned earlier. Uh this landscape plan does include new shade trees and new shrubs. Uh next slide, please. So here are some architectural renderings. Um I believe these renderings depict harmony with the surrounding residential character. You have a one-story building height, again, thirty-three feet tall at its highest. And there's use of materials that are found in other structures in the area, brick, stone, aluminum. Um if you look at these elevations, you also see a good deal of articulation, uh visual interest, um windows and a variety of materials. Uh next slide, please. And here is a rendering of the fuel canopy. Uh just to note that the canopy does uh comply with uh thirty-five-foot building height limit in this portion of the Frederick Avenue corridor and also uses materials that are found in nearby structures. Uh if we can move to the next slide, please. So we want to thank staff, especially uh Ms. Forbes for her hard work and her team's hard work and close attention to this project. Uh we believe that this project does promote the health and safety of those working on the land in question and in the neighborhood, as well as enhance the public welfare. This is achieved by redeveloping an underutilized site with a new business, offering new employment opportunities, improving vehicular and pedestrian circulation in the area, incorporating new state-of-the-oryr stormwater management on a site where there's no storm mark water management today, as well as including significant amount of landscaping in excess of zoning requirements. And as was found by the city council on the approval of the SDP, as well as demonstrated in the final site plan, the project is also compatible with other existing uses and with existing and proposed adjacent development. This is achieved by including the significant landscape buffer in the rear of the property, which is similar to nearby properties, as well as the inclusion of the privacy fence, placing the fuel canopy closer to MB three fifty-five with the convenience retail building in the rear and providing landscaping with new trees along the three fifty-five frontage to create a welcoming appearance. The project also uses building heights and materials similar with those found in the surrounding neighborhoods. And the new sidewalks that we presented will enhance connectivity with surrounding properties. And as demonstrated in the record, the site plan does adhere to all applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance and the city code. Uh the site plan will also not be incompatible or inharmonious with the city's environmental standards. Again, we are improving stormwater management. The project retains amount of forest and creates a new category one forest conservation easement areas. Uh we have reviewed the staff report and consent to the one condition of approval recommended by staff. And again, we are grateful for staff's recommendation of approval and respectfully request the planning commission approve the site plan.
Great, thank you. Um let me get two quick clarifications so I could. Um when you showed the canopy, I think at least the packet, I'm looking at packet three sixty-two. I'm not sure which page you had up when you showed it, but it was it was sort of brief, but um tech team, if you could go to three sixty-two, please. Just to be clear, uh the low side is against the front of the convenience store building or is that against the road? Which which way is this oriented? Mr. Hall, you're on mute. So I missed the whole answer.
Yeah, no, I I apologize. Um I missed, before I misspeak, uh I'd like to bring in if we have um Chris Hoffman from Wawa to comment or um Matt Jones or Mira Ganser from Bowler. If you can bring them them in to the meeting.
Okay, give tech team a second to do that.
Good evening. Can I, everyone I see and hear me?
Sure can. Thanks for joining us.
Of course, thanks for having me. Um to answer your question, the low side with the with with that Wawa logo on the edge uh there would be facing the street, the high side facing the building.
That was that was my assumption too, but I wanted to to not misspeak, so thank you, Chris.
So it presents, it presents a low profile of the street as opposed to a large open up. While you're there, um on page three sixty-one, um there's the four elevations. On the right, southeast elevation, there's a little red, white, and blue thing and a little um sort of brown thing. Um wha- what are those?
Um on the little brown thing, and I'm sorry, you're the south. Yes, the uh the little brown thing is a uh it's an additional storage for a bags of ice to be sold. Um we've uh we keep a freezer inside the the building to to uh for customers to purchase ice bags of ice from. However, it frequently does not hold enough and it's not reasonable to have many ice merchandisers inside the store. So we have uh Many ice merchandisers inside the store, so we have uh an ice merchandiser inside the store for the customer ac- customer access. This is an additional ice. Storage unit that the employees would then take bags of ice from that unit and move it to the inside. Uh should the inside ice merchandiser um. Uh be a run low. The red, white and blue. Uh uh. But um. Can contraption there is a uh. It's an automated self-service propane um just uh. Dispenser. Now, to be clear, uh a number of these things are standard kind of elevations. Uh items from our architect. Uh so. Phil, I if any of these are running against what we were previously approved for, we obviously can uh. Uh you know, talk about that. However, that's what is being shown.
Okay, fair enough. And and I think we'll we'll wait till the discussion, but I think part of it will be just how to. Make sure things are not cluttering up for no good reason. Some of the outside areas and and. Obviously, you have things for your business you need. Just just to make sure we're it's very deliberate about where they are because they don't appear to be. Appropriately placed here only because of the orientation of the building and where. Doors are and things like that, but maybe they are. So we can we can get into that later. Thanks for that clarification. Um commissioners, any any questions for the applicants team before we go to public testimony? Phil, please.
I I have one and it's. It seems to be one one of the things we always find ourselves talking about in in just about every commercial application and that's trash. I noticed you have a. Trash enclosure at the rear of the building. What are your plans for, you know, size of dumpster, frequency of emptying? Yep. The enclosures there, you can see it on plan on packet page three fifty-six as well. Um it looks like there are multiple things that are shown inside. Uh. Inside that enclosure to the rear, and I don't know if it's possible. I couldn't find it zoomed in in view. You know, it looks like it's a double. There's a machinery enclosure and there's a double access from either side. But it wasn't clear to me, you know, what you're actually providing as far as. Dumpster trash storage.
Uh yes, of course. So of those three items, uh the the two. Uh on the far left and far right closest to the doors, one is a cardboard dumpster and the other is the general trash dumpster. Uh we generally aim for two pickups a week. Um. I imagine that is where this store would fall based on what we're can thinking the sales would be. The item in the middle. Is a uh it's a shed where we we store some of uh. Some of uh. Our kind of exterior main maintenance items. So for instance, it has bags of salt in it. Uh you know, should uh should we need so uh we we have vendors who provide. Uh snow removal and and salting of sidewalks. However, we. Store salt at the store should the employees need to apply it. Quicker than a vendor could get there. So items like that, cones, for instance, if a. If a if a dispenser is uh goes down for whatever reason, we'll put a cone out. So those types of items are stored in that show in that ship.
Okay, so.
Team, I'm sorry, if tech team brings up packet page of five hundred and fifty-six. That is more of a clear uh look in that um enclosure.
Okay, so if you're you're doing two-week pickups, are are these dumpsters or these large trash cans that and? The reason I'm. Okay, that's that's a little bit more clear. So these are these are the front lift. Dumpsters. Have you run the turn radius to make sure a trash truck can actually get? You know, get his front forks in there, pick this thing up and back up.
We have. I don't know if it's part of the packet, but we it exists and and we could provide that if necessary.
Okay, it. I'm not sure I necessarily need for me. I just looking at that, I want to make sure. From a, you know, quality of life in the neighborhood. You know, rodents, things like that, you know, make sure that the trash is is. A there's sufficient storage for it and it's being picked up, you know, frequently enough and and that there's a. A clear process in place to make sure that people can actually come and actually empty the dumpster. So as long as it's something that's been addressed. I think that's my question.
Actually, if you give me a minute.
Packet page five uh thirty-two.
Yes, thank you, Greg. That's exactly what I was gonna say. So this is a. A diagram that shows the truck trash turning radius and shows that it can go around. The rear of the property.
Okay. Okay. Greg and Jasmine, I'm assume assuming the city's traffic engineers have reviewed this and are comfortable with it, that we're not driving over curbs and stuff. It. Looks very tight, but.
That's correct. It's been reviewed by the city's Department of Public Works and they were they found it satisfying.
Okay.
Thanks, Phil. Anything else?
Okay, Commissioner, is anything else? Sharon, please.
Um so if we can go back to packet page three fifty-six. I see that there are bollards noted in the front and I'm just wondering, there's a line. Um. If you see the the blue and orange line in front, are the dots the bollards or the are the bollards closer to the? The um the side, I mean, I'm confused as to where the bollards go. I see it's labeled, but. Not sure where they are.
Um so so to be clear, those larger squares that are kind of scatter along that the sidewalk there, there the actual the overhead lights that are underneath the. The overhang, the bollards uh will be approximately. One foot back from the head of each parking stall. And there'll be two of them per each parking stall. Centered uh on the stall. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's kind of where the line goes, is that right?
Yes, yes, right on the backside of that line that divides the parking area from the sidewalk area. Correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, Sharon and Lloyd, please.
Yeah, just a quick question. I notice there are only two bike uh racks or. Parking for two bicycles. Uh you're directly across the street from a high school. Uh kids take their bikes to and from and they will be crossing over there to buy stuff at the Wawa. Uh any provision for expanding the number of bike racks or any potential room for expanding the bike racks?
Um I'll have to defer to our bowler reps to see if there's actually space to accommodate that. I believe we are complying with. Uh the zoning orange requirements. I I'm not sure there's additional space to accommodate that, so. I might ask uh. Miss Ganser and Miss Jones to. To comment.
Well, the number of parking spaces, does that exceed the number that's required by the city? I believe it does.
It does. There was a number of parking waivers that were that were approved at the S D P phase.
Okay, well, uh I would like to see more bike racks available, particularly for the students that are becoming across the street during their breaks. Just thought they should be uh accommodating.
So right now, just since when the question asked, Brad, you have. Space for two bikes? Is that what the sort of official count is? Okay.
And and to the best of the the. Developers teams' knowledge, there isn't. An easy way to expand that at this point, is that right? Or am I misunderstanding the?
Well, that's why I'm I'm asking either. Ganser or Miss Jones, um if they're available to.
At the current and good evening, everybody. At the current location, um. At the, I guess you could say corner where everyone's seeing the bike racks. In that particular location, there is not an opportunity right now to be able to expand that particular because we do need room. Um. For the pedestrians to be able to walk on the sidewalk, so we don't want to have obstruction, but we can certainly take a look at the site. And see where else we could potentially put additional bike racks that. Um still have good pedestrian circulation and not obstructing that. Um but also. For your request, you know, do get additional spaces there. And potentially on the west side of the building.
Right, yeah, to to Miss Ganser's point, you know, since the the S D P, we did extend the sidewalks. So that did take away potential space that could have been used for bike racks.
I'd like you to uh work with staff at some point in the future before this goes further. Uh to uh find out where there could be other other spaces for more uh bike racks.
We could explore the opportunity for that.
Yeah, I guess every one of those bollards becomes an opportunity to lock up a bike too, right?
Yeah, I mean, just just to know, you know, we we do meet the the zoning ordinance requirements, you know, we can explore it. I can't promise that we'll be able to fit it, looking at all the site.
I I tell you, we'll get into that during discussion and we'll we'll put some finality around that that condition or that request when we we get to that point, but thanks, Lloyd. Um I think it's a great point. Um any other questions for the uh applicant's team before we go to the public? All right, I'm not seeing any arms flailing. Um so tech team, uh one more time, let's play the uh public testimony video and we'll see see what we have.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment. We can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, so we do have a hand up for Carol Johnson. Please uh please join us. It looks like you're on mute, so take. There we go.
Okay, hi, thank you. Yeah, uh thanks Lloyd for that great point. There's also quite a number of residents. That commute with bicycles. Did you catch my first point?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um but I'm mostly uh calling in to uh. I understand the procedure and that this is um already been approved, but. What I'd really like to see is not gasoline, but E V uh charging stations uh along with the retail store. I think that um the future is here and uh it's really kind of silly to um. To put in all this money for gasoline when uh there's a very disruptive technology going on and that's a. Every company is busy building batteries and electric vehicles and we need to be able to charge our cars. And um I think Wawa is making a tremendous mistake by putting in a gasoline. Um pumping stations and if it was any way to be creative. In this process, I would really like it if you could consider that point of changing the nature of the fueling of stations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Um and we'll we'll address the questions and the comments um at the end of the public testimony, just so we we're we're. Give staff a chance to be thorough about that, but um two very excellent comments. Thank you for that. Um I see a hand up from Walter Umana. Walter, you there? Hello?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Good evening. We sure can. Thank you. Can you hear us?
Uh for some reason I lost audio. Uh one one moment here, sorry.
No problem.
Hello, uh can can everyone hear me?
Sure can. Can you hear us?
Okay, um so uh. Sorry, I'm I can't hear anybody, but I guess you guys can hear me, so I'll just go ahead and speak here. Um so my uh house is uh bordering the uh backside of this Wawa. Um. Well, I have a few concerns um specifically around uh to my understanding, Wawa is a twenty-four hours uh. Twenty-four seven uh seven establishment. Um and uh one of our concerns had to do with um. The level of noise as well as light pollution. Um I. Did see that there was going to be, I think, of what would be a fence. Uh on the backside of this establishment. Um. And I don't know if that is the minimum requirement that would need to be placed there. Um I also heard there was some shrubbery to be there, but I don't know if there was any um adjustment to be made or or any improvement to be made to. Have a clear division between the establishment and the residential neighborhood that's right behind it, considering that it's so close. Um to to uh several houses that uh were opposed to this um being approved. So um that that was one of my main concerns at this point. Uh I understand that. The it's been approved and and it's gonna happen, but um. Uh we just wanted to make sure that there was a a fine um. Line between where the uh commercial side and the residential uh side is. To keep the peace, this is a very quiet neighborhood. It is very peaceful. Um you know, with uh Gathersburg being the city of trees, we want to make sure that it kind of uh maintains that uh type of uh. The the feel I and also just uh with the wildlife around here as well. We want to make sure that nothing gets uh disturbed more than it should be. Um so that was just one concern that I wanted to raise. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you can hear us. Um but if not, um we'll we'll be sure to. Get word back one way or the other about how this this discussion goes, but uh thank you for those comments. Excellent. Uh I see a hand up from uh Monica Lozada. Can you uh? Join us, please.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thank you.
Uh thank you for having this. Um so I'm Monica Lozada. I'm actually under a hundred fifty feet. I'm the nearest house to the property. Um the establishment that you guys are trying to, um I'm not, as you guys are aware of, I'm not. Happy about the decision. I agree with Miss Kara Johnson about. The way the direction of the technology is going with electrical cars. Um. There's a lot of different manufacturers, Ford, Volvo, a lot of there's a commitment from the federal government. Of having certain percentage of electrical vehicles by twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, but. That's a decision you guys already made, but I'm just trying to uh reiterate what Miss Kara Johnson said. Uh. I wanted to know, um are there going to be security cameras in the establishment specifically mainly um thinking about the rear area? I I have big concerns. Um I have two uh twin toddlers. My playground is right on the back fence uh where you guys are going to be building. Um the Wawa um and security is a major issue for me, so I would like to know if there'd be security cameras. Um as well, are you going to be doing the entire perimeter with tall shrubs? Um try to uh help with the uh. The pollution, uh noise pollution, the vapors um and that. And as well, I was kind of interested, Doug, placement of the tanks. Where the tanks are going to be placed in proximity um to the uh the lot. Um and what size? I can't recall exactly what the size of the gas tanks would be. Um the reason I'm asking is obviously contamination. I know you. I know you guys said there will be monitoring of leaks and whatnot, but like we know this is new technology and with time, sometimes things leak. Okay, um so that's a concern as well. Um. HUD has certain requirements for residential homes. To be of for a certain proximity of a gas station, so that's uh I definitely would like to know what the proximity of those tanks are. Um. And and regarding the bicycle, um just a consideration, if you guys haven't thought about it, is there not possibility to remove one parking space? To add additional bike racks? I mean, because two bikes, it's that's really, really little. I mean, we definitely need more bike racks and I don't know see why. Losing one parking space, um can I be accommodated to add that um extra bike racks? And as well, I was just curious, um. You said that every two weeks you're gonna be picking up trash. Is there if there's going to be an overflow? Are you guys going to be considering? To uh make them more frequent to make sure um there's not an overflow of trash or vermin or whatnot. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um and as I said, we'll we'll um go back and and review the questions um all at once at the end of the public testimony. All right, um any other, let me look here on the list, is there any other hands up? And I don't see any. However, if somebody does want to raise their hand, please feel free to. We'll we'll get into some of these questions now um and try to. Get some answers on the on the table. Um let me start with kind of a a larger macro question for the Wawa uh team. Charging stations have been brought up tonight and then some some written testimony we've received. Could you comment? Now, obviously, you may not have them today, but comment kind of generally. What happens to a Wawa uh facility like this as as the technology evolves for charging stations and? And maybe the 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 commercial demand starts to it. Starts to migrate from traditional fuels to to charging.
Uh so I can speak to the uh. Charging stations. Uh we did consider uh. Including incorporating uh a few charging stations. Uh the problem was, you know, again, there are some serious site constraints and conflicts. With stormwater management facilities, the sidewalk systems. Uh that does present some considerable challenges for the the charging station, so it wasn't that was considered. And as far as the future technology go, that'd have to defer to to Chris on that, but. Um I can just state for the record that it wasn't that was considered. It just couldn't be. Easily accommodated due all to due to all the various competing. Uh factors involved, like the sidewalks and the stormwater.
Okay, thank you for that.
So with respect to kind of our view for. What gets sold under that canopy now and to the future, um. So we are certainly. Cognizant of the uh of the growth. So we are certainly cognizant of the, of the growth in electric vehicle and the electric vehicle sales and the percentage that they have vehicles that they make up on the road. If, if anyone's familiar with Wawa's kind of further away from this area, we don't have any Montgomery County at the moment. So you'd have to go with to find it, but we have been installing partnering with some EV charging partners, in particular, in particular Tesla. We have, I believe it's upwards of 100 stations that have Tesla charging systems installed and we are working with a few other partners that use, that, that install systems that work with other vehicles. So to Phil's point, it wasn't that we didn't look, it's, the site is very, very tight. I will say, however, you know, we are always kind of looking to see how we can figure it out. So I would suspect that once the store is open, you know, we're going to work with some of our partners to see if they have some kind of configuration or layout of charging that would work. Again, to Phil's point, it's just that at this, at this point, when you look around the site, if there's not a underground storm, what are, underground storm bed, sidewalk, lights, you know, so inlet structures, stormwater pipes. It seems like nearly every, every cluster of stalls around the perimeter of the site unfortunately is kind of littered with that underground and it makes, it makes finding a good spot for these charging stations difficult.
Yeah, really quickly, sort of interrupt, just want to really quickly piggyback on that. One also constraint, it's worth mentioning is a significant landscape buffer in the rear of the property. It does limit the paved areas and we have certain requirements to ensure adequate turning movements. But we did want to incorporate that, that 63 foot deep landscape buffer, which is significant. But that does, you know, impact other things that can be done on the site.
Well, I think, I think maybe the way I should phrase the question is, is it conceivable that over, over the course of the next some number of years as the commercial demand for charging begins to supplant petroleum fuels, you know, gas, that you, you all could begin to swap out some of the conventional gas, gas pumps for charging stations with that? Is that even a conceivable notion at this point?
Well, so when, just to be clear, when we partner with Teslas and these other folks right now, it's not under the canopy. It's along, it's, you know, in parking stalls along the perimeter of the site. However, to direct, to directly answer your question, you know, so that, that question comes up internally often and our position is right now, most vehicles on the road need gas. However, at some point in the future, they're going to need something else, whatever that happens to be. Right now, it seems to be electric. You know, there was a point in time a few years ago when everyone was thinking maybe it might have been natural gas. So, you know, our position is cars are going to need something to move and as the market moves, we can, we can provide that, whether it's gas now or it's natural gas or it's, you know, just straight up vehicle charging under that canopy at some point in the future.
Okay. And, and by the way, it sounds to me like if you do have a partner for EV charging that a, a space or two couldn't ultimately be retrofitted for that at any given time. There's nothing precluding that to happen. Once you, you've opened and decide what the market might be for, is that, is that fair?
That is fair and, and the constraint that we're going to, that we're potentially going to have to attempt to work around here is, you know, the, the support equipment to run Tesla's, the Tesla's chargers costs a lot of money. So they don't like to put all that, you know, transformers and switchgear in if this, a particular location is only going to service two of their vehicles. So their mandate with us is to work, you know, find a spot where we can put eight charging stalls. So the issue is, is we may be able to find one or two around the site, but in order for it to be a reasonable investment for them or any partner, you know, they want to see, they want, they want this facility to, to service a number of their vehicles, not just one or two.
Okay, fair enough. Great. That's great insight. Thank you. All right, let's, let's attack the, the question of noise, light. The sort of neighbor, the, the buffer to the neighbors now, but before he gets a chance to say it again, Mr. Hummel, I realize there's a 63 foot landscape buffer out the back and congratulations for that. We truly do appreciate it, but let's talk more about how the cutoff fixtures, the, the photometrics work. What, what realistically is the noise generation on a, on a site like this and with a facility like this? And then what, what mitigates that to the, to the neighbors to the north and, or north and the east?
Sure, give me, board's indulgence. I, I do know we have the photometrics in, in the record. I just want to, to find them.
And isn't there something like a 63 foot wide landscape buffer on the rear?
It's a unique feature. It's a unique feature for Wawa.
Okay.
Well, the photometric is on sheet 522.
Thank you, Jasmine.
And so maybe when this, when this plan comes up, just, just for the folks watching, provide a little interpretation of what the the diagram means for, for light spillage to adjacent, adjacent properties.
Sure. So if we could, that's, that's not right. It's packet page.
522.
Five, five, 22. Okay, so if we can zoom in on the image on the left towards the rear of the property. Keep zooming in and if we can. I would love to do this myself if I could, but I'm kind of.
Oh, it's working fine. Okay.
Okay, so these numbers that you see, those are foot candle numbers. That is a unit of metric for illumination. And if you look in the very rear in that wonderful landscape buffer, you'll see that the numbers are zero, which means there's no illumination in that rear part of the property. So I know there was a question about light pollution. I also believe that all the light fixtures that are being used on the site are full cutoff fixtures. They will use LED bulbs, modern LED bulbs. And I believe all the fixtures except for a couple or a few that are near the right in, right out entrance, which is on the other side of the site, all have back shields, which again, all helps eliminate or reduce or mitigate light spillage.
So the engineering is to be believed here and I know it is because they're, they're very good at understanding how the, how the, the light throws work. At the back of the site, there will be literally be no light coming from the site lighting onto adjacent properties. And that's an important feature because there are light fixtures in the city right now that are probably 30 or 40 years old or maybe, maybe not quite that old, but nevertheless do allow light to spill onto other sites and, and create quite a bit of light of pollution either up or out. And current technology allows for this very controlled sort of placement of light down to where it needs to be on the driveways, on the sidewalks and, and on the site where people are inhabiting it and can, can provide this sort of very, very careful, carefully placed light. So it's, it's, it's a believable measurement. There, there may be actually a view of the light fixtures depending on how tall, how tall, tall the poles are, but, but the photometrics I think bear out that there wouldn't, there wouldn't be spillage on other sites.
And, you know, there's, I'm sorry to interrupt here.
Oh, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm going to collaborate on that.
Oh, no, I, I, I agree with all that. I just wanted to make the point because there also was a comment about security. So there are, you know, dual interests here is one in the rear to make sure that, you know, there's no illumination spilling off or mitigating that to the greatest extent possible. But on the areas around the store where you do want more lights for, for security, the photometric plan does bear that out too. So there's good visibility to, you know, provide for a feeling of safety, you know, for coming late at night. But also ensuring that there's a consideration for the surrounding residential neighbors in the rear.
Very good. And kind of continue that. One of the other comments or questions was, what sort of monitoring would be going on with activity on the rear of the site? Because obviously it's behind the store.
Sure. So for that, I, I can talk about just how the project was intentionally designed to, you know, reduce, reducing the encouragement of activity back there. You know, there's no rear customer entrance back there. There are no parking spaces back there. There's no rear customer entrance, no rear parking spaces. There are also no tables for outdoor dining. As far as, you know, security protocol, I'd probably ask Chris to comment on that, but as far as design, it was something that was considered, again, a consideration of the neighbors in the rear to discourage activity in that portion of, of the project.
So if I, if I may add just some detail regarding security and security monitoring in particular, yeah, so the, the store would have, will have cameras inside and out that can view all, all areas again, inside the store as well as outside the store. That would include, you know, the sides and rear, including cameras on the front of the store building facing out towards the canopy. So you know, those, those areas will be monitored 24/7. All Wawas are owned and operated by Wawa and therefore are, you know, we can have a, a good consolidated security program. So we have you know, a command center, if you will, at our headquarters where a number of security professionals monitor the cameras from all of the stores all the time. The store personnel, the shift manager will always carry a, you know, an emergency button. In addition, there's, you know, emergency buttons under the cash, under the cash register. So if there was ever a situation on the site that called for either immediate kind of police response or simply just, you know, moderate commotion that would just be something we'd want to bring to the attention of our attorney, internal security folks, the store have that, the store personnel have the ability to, to make to call in those resources as necessary.
Okay, very good. What, what, what kind of along with that, I think too, is a concern about noise generation and how that might, might impact neighbors. They're just taking it at face value. There isn't a lot of noise generation per se in a, in a filling station, but I think the implication was attracting more traffic. What would that do to noise? And if you could get your perspective and your experience having operated many of these stores with that, if there's any real implication there for, for a noise, increase in noise levels?
Sure. To, to repeat a bit of what Phil said, this, you know, we designed the site in a way to take some of that, take as much of that activity from the rear of the building and get it out of that area and move it to the front. As some of you may be aware, with a lot of the more modern Wawas, we take advantage of dual entrances, front and the rear. So in not doing that here, that removes that, that secondary entrance and the activity associated with it. Well, to address kind of while there is no parking immediate and entrance back there, you know, there are parking stalls to kind of make your way back there for sure. We, I certainly can acknowledge that. But, you know, we park the store for kind of peak hour use. So you know, we know from operating these facilities that, you know, busy times in the morning, you're obviously going to have a lot more people than you do at, you know, not busy times. So the expectation and the general way these, these facilities operate is, you know, the later in the hour, the less likely a customer is going to need to use even some of the parking at the side of the building, you know, so you know, 11 o'clock at night into the, the midnight hours to acknowledging we're a 24 hour business. Those hours are lightly trafficked. Typically the stalls at the front of the building are open at that point in time and our customers would utilize them as opposed to utilizing the ones further away from the entrance. So, so you know, all those things taken together, I do believe that the, the noise generation from the rear of the store that may impact some of the neighbors would be a minimum.
Okay, very good.
Chair, if I can just back on that too, you know, to hearken back to the SDP review. Noise was something that was considered in great detail, just to confirm that, you know, in the record for the site plan, staff did incorporate the record for the SDP. So I can reference these during the SDP phase. The applicant did have an acoustical engineer conduct an environmental noise analysis. That's in record. Exhibit 105G from the SDP. And that engineer concluded that noises generated by customers, I think the biggest fear was, you know, loud customers and car doors closing, that kind of simultaneously. The engineer did conclude that, that this can be accommodated on this, on the property in compliance with governing law and will not negatively affect the health and well-being of surrounding properties. And then during the SDP phase, staff did find that the noise from the development would not adversely the impact of the character of the surrounding neighborhood and that this analysis was adopted in the city council's SDP resolution.
Okay, thank you for that reference. Okay, the next thing I'd like to move to is just clarify for all watching the, where the fence is, how tall it is and where it is, with, with how much of the site, how close to the rear of the site the fence is, or if it's right off the curb line up against the property. And what, what is the fence configuration?
Yeah, so my, my understanding is if we could pull up the site plan. Well, while, while we're waiting for that, I can, I can state and, you know, Ms. Ganser or Mr. Jones can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that fence is a six foot board on board privacy fence. It runs along the entire rear lot line and you can find a detail of that fence on packet page 523.
So the, the upshot of that is the fences to the rear, which means you're going to be able to maintain the entirety of the property that's within the boundary. It's not as if there's some of the properties on the other side of the fence that would get neglected, trash collections, whatever it might be. And it's pushed this far back and, and will, will benefit those adjacent to it.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, not, not, not to hearken us on this again, but we do have that, you know, 63 foot deep landscape buffer. That's, the fence is behind that. And there is also some grading in the rear. The property slopes upward. The natural slope in and of itself does also create some natural separation. The Wawa will sit about 10 feet below the height in the rear of the property.
All right, good. Thank you. Thanks for the detail. And I think we understand that now. There was some testimony, it, it was alluded to in our public testimony tonight, but it was also in the record with some, some recent email correspondence, talking about the proximity of the fuel tanks to adjacent homes and the implication within certain types of financing, certain types of insurance and things like that. And I, I just want to get on the table tonight, what, what those dimensions really are, what those requirements or what those restrictions are, just so we understand that we're addressing it or we want to understand it too. We're not, we're not pressing it to the side. So I'm not sure Jasmine, if the staff is prepared to talk about this, if it's applicant's counsel, you all need to tell me how you want to address that question, one way or the other.
Sure. Well, I can say that we, we did look into this. It kind of came up late in the process. But we did, well, 1788 did conduct some research about, you know, FHA issues and VA issues. And I think help for those who are concerned about it, that at least based on the research that 1788 conducted as it relates to FHA issues, those concerns or restrictions on getting an FHA insured mortgage applies to above ground storage tanks. And none of the storage tanks here at this Wawa are proposed to be above ground. They're all below ground. And again, just based on the research that 1788 was able to conduct in the short time period, since this issue has come up as it relates to the VA, our understanding is that that applies to both above ground and underground tanks within a certain proximity, but it doesn't preclude the issuance of such mortgages. It's just something that's noted on an appraisal by the appraiser. And the veteran who, you know, was seeking the mortgage is asked to acknowledge that the presence of any underground tanks. It does not preclude the VA as, as I, as we understand it, based on, again, on the research we've done, it does not preclude the issuance of a mortgage. It's just something that needs again, to be reported on the appraisal. It's just one of the factors that goes into the appraisal. And it's really a theoretical concern. The project will have a brand new state of the art underground storage tank system. There will be redundant safety features. Again, this was something that was discussed and considered in great detail. P phase. You know, there's, there's nothing, this is not like a storage tank that's been, you know, sitting on a property for, you know, decades or 50 plus years. This would be a brand new system, you know, constructed, state of the art features. There's nothing that could really cause a detriment to a property's value arising from this. So I know, I know it kind of came up in some correspondence later in the review. This was based on the research that we could do in the short time period, but again, it seems that it's really a speculative concern. And to make the broader concern that it's really not germane to approval of a site plan. You know, of course, an automobile filling station, this was something that was, again, considered and affirmed by. The courts that a automobile filling station is a use that's permitted by right in the C D zone. So it's something that 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 can that can be done. And. One board, board indulgence, just looking at my notes. Again, it's not really an issue that's that's really relevant to the the planning commission to to to.
Oh, I think, I think, I think we'll just, we'll decide which which element, which items are relevant. I'm I'm just looking.
Well, you know, I I I, but with all due respect, you know, the the. Is constrained by the required findings. From the zoning ordinance. And also needs to acknowledge that there was a previously approved S D P.
Yes, it was.
This is in accordance with that S D P. Staff has agreed with that, with that analysis. There's nothing really in the record to show. That that the houses that are within a certain proximity are ineligible to receive. Financing back by either F H A or V A. It just seems to be like a generalized concern without basis in fact.
That's noted.
I'm sorry. I do want to note that staff did put together a little graphic. If I don't have tech team. Have it, but it's, we superimposed the the site plan on top of an aerial. And put a three hundred foot buffer around the underground tanks to just kind of show what that three hundred foot buffer looks like. I don't know if I'm. Tech team, if they have it. They can bring that up. Then there was questions about kind of the distance. So here's the first one. So what, so there's two. So this one is we put. A dot kind of like in the center where the tanks are and put a three hundred. A three hundred foot buffer. And then the second one, we kind of drew. A shape or basically did a shape file. Outlining the outdoor, underground storage tanks and put a three hundred buffer. So there's two.
And it looks like at a cursory level, it's it's not an unfounded concern and I and I respect the neighbors. Concern about that, but that is a practical matter. It 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 probably doesn't play into. A concern that that. Would in any way undermine compatibility where this is located in the zone that it's in. I appreciate the the work that Jasmine, thank you for for clarifying that and Mr. Hummel for for diving into some of the research. I appreciate that too. That helps with them. Just at least some background on what we're what we're getting for for comments. All right. And then let's let's finish up then with. This issue of bikes and what potential there is for. Adding more capacity for bike riders, since this is primarily a convenience store and a gas station, we do want to. Assume we're going to be encouraging pedestrian and bike traffic to the to the site. So. And I don't, I'm not looking for any one particular answer, any one particular person to answer, but. I I would like some some discussion on the record about. What strategy might be if there's, if there's a need to add more bike bike parking capacity. So the applicants can start.
I'll have to defer to our engineering team on space constraints, but I will just. The record. That the project does comply with with the zoning ordinance requirements for for parking, but. I will defer to either Mr. Jones or Ms. Ganser to see if there's. Given all the different site constraints, if there's a possibility of adding additional bike parking.
So, again, I I can't say here's an exact location that we could do it. I I still think it is something we need to further evaluate. We are trying, as I mentioned before, to keep all the pedestrian connections open. So we could potentially look at the west side of the building where there is an existing sidewalk. That's eight feet and potentially have one or two more bike racks up against the building. But still being able to have. At least, you know, four feet, five feet for pedestrians to be able to walk past that and not. Not be in the way of that. So we'd have to take a look and we'd probably have to talk internally a little bit. I know you mentioned. Parking spaces and utilizing those. I think we'd have to talk internally as a team.
So, yeah, I I think it's in the spirit of cooperation, you know, if if the planning commission is inclined to explore this, you know, further. Perhaps the condition would be appropriate that, you know, prior maybe to building permit issuance. That applicant will work with staff to explore the cooperation potentially to. Additional bike parking.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right, commissioners, did I miss any of the comments that came in from the public that that you might have heard?
The tree landscaping, I believe, was one of the questions. How large are the trees going to be? And we know the location, but will they provide enough of a buffer immediately? Or will it take twenty years before they get to be twenty feet tall?
I can speak to the number of trees. I might need some assistance on the size of the trees. But the final landscaping plan does show that the project. Is going to plant eleven new shade trees. Two specimen trees are being removed pursuant to a variance that was approved at the S D P phase. But there will be eleven new shade trees, so there will be a net increase in trees there. And about two hundred and thirty one new deciduous shrubs. As far as the the size, I believe. The the canopy that's shown on the plans. That takes about ten years to reach that size, that diameter. If I'm incorrect, I'd ask either Mr. Jones or Ms. Ganser to correct me, but I believe. That's how long it takes to get to the canopy shown on the plans.
Sure, and I can elaborate a little bit further. There's. Different kinds of species that we have, I think, to reach full maturity where they're the full tall size. It does take up to ten years. I mean, as they're planted, again, depending on the species and there's a landscape plan that details out. With a schedule, the different quantities, the different types, and it kind of does talk through the calipers. At least specifically about the trees kind of at the front edge on three fifty five and throughout the site. As far as the buffering and the trees and landscaping at the back of the site towards the residential properties. We are leaving. Some of the existing forest and retaining it. So those mature trees will stay and they will provide that existing buffer, especially right along the back of those residential properties. And then closer towards the middle and closer towards inside the site is where we're proposing a forestation where there'll be. More seeding and grass, but. The immediate adjacent residential properties will have those mature trees that are retained.
And just to get back on that answer, it might be helpful if we go to packet page three sixty four. You have some cross sections that show. You know, the the buffer in the rear, some of the street trees closer to three fifty five as a cross section. Just to give some sense with what they'll look like at five years and fifteen years.
Oh, yeah, very good. Yeah, I think that's also a good exhibit to to demonstrate the effect of. The topography that the reviews and for potentially acoustics and all that will that will be helpful as well. And actually, so one thing to note, I think I asked the question about the canopy and whether it presented. It's tall side or short side to the street, and I believe the answer we got was the short side. Was to the street, but this is actually drawn with the tall side. So. You guys want to make sure that's correct or what?
That that might be an inadvertent. Error in this sheet. I would go off what Mr. Hoffman said earlier about which way is facing.
Okay.
And I can confirm that for just for the sake of clarity.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I believe, you know, the the point Mr. Hoffman made was that the Wawa signage is along the shorter end of the canopy, and that's what faces the street.
Okay.
John, can I can I ask another question about the canopy?
Yeah, sure.
In the previous hearings we had. I brought up the fact that the canopy, as big as it is, would be a great place for solar panels. And I believe at one point, the representatives from Wawa said that they had been thinking about doing this at other other sites. I still insist with the size of the canopy and its location, would it not be primed for solar panels? Has that been reconsidered or has the company gone any further in their consideration of putting in more solar panels?
So I I can start to speak to that and Chris can pipe in if I miss anything. So my understanding is on the solar. That it is something that Wawa continues to closely review. But that analysis is still ongoing. There might be a vendor involved for the, you know, the the solar panels themselves. So due to that ongoing nature of that review, Wawa can't commit for this particular project at this particular time. To incorporate solar panels, given the specific timeline. But it is that it continues to explore. And Chris, if there's anything that you want to add to that, please do.
Yeah, so I I I will. Help, I guess, explain maybe some progress that's been made. You know, last time I answered this question. I believe the the scenario was a little more nebulous than it is now. Yeah, I confirmed just this week with the team internally that manages this program that the the current. Suite of incentives and market condition in the state of Maryland is advantageous to solar now where it wasn't a few years ago. So we have identified a partner who is, you know. Similar to kind of the the arrangements you the people do with, you know. Tesla or us. To, you know, they own the, you know, the vendor will own the panels installed on your facility and you agree to purchase power at a particular price. So we've identified a vendor who we are working through kind of contractual terms and and schedules. To to work with in Maryland. However, there's no assurance that that deal is going to be signed and we are going to be in a position to put. Panels on this particular canopy. By, you know, the day we open, but I I will say that we confirmed with the vendor today that the orientation of the canopy is sufficient. That they they would sign up to install it here. With the with the slope of our canopy, if it's facing north, for instance, the solar panels won't generate any electricity. However, this particular canopy is facing approximately southwest. So the vendor has confirmed confirmed that it is facing the appropriate direction. So we will explore it further, but but again. I it's 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 hard for me to say whether or not that deal will be in place, you know, in time to to open the store with panels on.
But some at some time in the future, perhaps, that could be accommodated on that canopy.
Oh, so yeah, the plan with this vendor is not simply to sign them up to install it on new stores. It's to go through our whole suite of stores in the state of Maryland. And identify the ones that face the right direction, identify the ones that make sense to install it and install.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate that that response.
All right, thanks, Lloyd. Okay, I think we've gotten through our, oh, Sharon, please.
Yeah, this is, I'm getting back to the tanks real quick. You'd said that there are no tractor trailers that would be coming into the site. Presumably, they're, this this site is too small to fit a tractor trailer in it. What about the tankers? When they come in to fill up the storage tanks, where where do they go? I'm I'm looking at specifically three fifty six. I'm presuming that the tanks are below, the tanks are above grade, right? So. Does it shut down the site because it's so large, the the tanks? How does how does that work?
So we also have a turning diagram that shows how that would work. I'm just scrolling through to find the exact page.
That'll be on five twenty nine of the packet.
Thank you, Jasmine.
And note what the agreement with the whole Brook Center. Trash and any delivery trucks cannot use that entrance that share between Wawa and the whole Brooks of the. Trucks have to enter in off of three fifty five and exit off of three fifty five.
Again, this shows how the the fuel truck can. You know, completely maneuver throughout the entire site. If there's sufficient space for it to do so. This was reviewed and approved by city staff.
But when it, when it, it has to stop and park when it when it when it fills up, correct?
Yes, yes. And the truck, I understand it, when when it's doing deliveries, it's. It's required to turn off and not idle. If you see, if we can zoom into where the truck actually is, I believe that's where, close to where it parks. To do the deliveries. Because that's where the the tanks are.
Oh, okay.
All right, good. And it looks like it's a pretty thorough analysis of the training radio and. Clearances, it's the those those guys thread the needle all the time, so it it appears that everything's been worked up pretty well. All right, Sharon, anything else? Any questions or concerns?
No, thanks.
Okay, so we have the questions, I think, and the the comments from the public addressed. With that, let's go to the staff recommendation, Jasmine, and then we'll move to discussion.
Before I go, I know there was discussion about a second possible condition.
Right, for the bikes.
I I think we'll we'll put that into discussion, but let's start with your recommendation first and then we'll we'll get there.
Um, so staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the testimony in the record. And the staff report findings and recommendation grant S P dash eighty nine eighty three dash twenty twenty one. Final site plan approval and final forest conservation plan, funded in performance with sections twenty four dash one seventy. And twenty four dash one seventy one of the city zoning ordinance with one condition.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, I think to start the discussion, I think, you know, in general, this has really come along. I mean, I I I guess I would compliment the applicant's team in general for all of the concerns that have come to the table, and as you, you probably know better than we do. How complicated these types of facilities can be in in getting them approved. And I think you've done a a really nice job of thoroughly. Addressing what came up during S D P and ultimately what what anticipated what would be some of the concerns this time around. So so nice job with the presentation. Thank you for being so well prepared and and resolving these with a with a very well developed site plan and and building design. And I, and at this point, I think there's just a couple of. Things that we probably want to include in the discussion moving forward. Lloyd, I want to now get back to your issue on bikes and and I want us to get something definitive in here for how to address that in the future. I had a couple of small architectural. Items for the building itself and. And about those accessory functional storage things on the outside. So. Let's start with the bikes. Um, the others are relatively minor. Lloyd, maybe let me, let me let you lead this. What what do you think is a is an appropriate way to approach this? Do you want to turn it to staff to find?
I think I think Mr. Hummel phrased the the condition very well, that the applicant work with staff. To come up with an adequate solution that would satisfy all parties. Jasmine, do you have that written down? I mean, did you get what Mr. Hummel said?
Yeah, I could just, I can just repeat that. It was, you know, prior prior to building from it, again, just to be on the top of my head, but prior to building permit. That applicant would work with staff to explore. The incorporation of additional bike parking spaces.
I I think that that more than fulfills the requirement.
And I wasn't being flip when I said that. You know, it it's not, I I'd be careful here because we want to be very, very thorough. But but bicycle riders can find places to lock up if there isn't one there already. We want to make it easy on them. We want to be, you know, facilitated. But I know there's also other opportunities if 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 there were a a peak of, you know. Say, a a a cycling club came by and there were thirty of them, they'd figure out a way to to make them safe while they ran into the store, but I I agree with you. I don't think there's enough now. It's just sort of a baseline. So I like that condition as well. Let's, if you if you would, I I lost the page, I apologize, but the sheet that had the four elevations of the building. Gosh, I'd lost that page number. We were just talking about it with the. Canopy and. The last time I brought up those, that what the little. L P gas dispensing station was all.
I believe it's packet page three six one.
Thank you for finding that. So we call it up. I had just a couple of comments and Phil, let me let me get your radar up here too, because I'll I'll. Ask for your opinion on some of these. On the front elevation, I I recognize this building from other places. One of the things that that I I'd like to see, and and there's a couple of reasons, and I'll give them to you if you need them, but just to be flat out direct. I I'd like to see those columns on some kind of plinth or base, you know, you pick up the stone or do something a little more substantial at the base for them. You know, they they're given the kind of proportions and mass of the building that the the porch. Is a nice feature, frankly, but then it seems a little bit cheaped out with the columns. There's probably plenty of structure. I'm not questioning that. This is. A completely an aesthetic aesthetic opinion or aesthetic bias. And then together with that, that there's a very deliberate placement, again, of the accessory. You know, whatever you call them, functions or services. On the outside of the building, it it seems strange to have that auxiliary storage where you have it because it's not near an entrance that a. Or an access point that a that a staff member might use, so maybe it needs. Or an access point that a that a staff member might use, so maybe it needs to be around back. And then the gas filling station, the LP gas tank self-service station. Maybe that should be closer to the front since you're trying to discourage people from going around back, except when it's really a peak time. Just just some things like that. And again, I think I roll that into a work with staff to to establish the most appropriate places for those things. So they're not just arbitrarily dropped on the site somewhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it it does. I I would agree, especially on the placement of the of the ancillary devices, specifically the the propane. Filling, you know, there there's no, there's nothing around that side of the building that you want people that are going to draw people back there unless they're going for propane. And it's sort of tucked back away. I would suggest, you know, working with staff and, you know, make it somewhere more convenient, I, you know. Find it's blue and it's branded Wawa. That that doesn't that doesn't bother me. Put it where it's most convenient for the people who are going to use it. On the on the columns, I think there are two separate issues. There's, you know, the treatment of. And maybe I'm misreading this elevation, the the stone. The two stone columns that are coming down in the front on either side of the the sort of Wawa. Bump out, are those, is the glass between those in plane with the columns or is that a a porch? I I'm not sure as I'm reading this whether, you know, the the area under that little Wawa. Tower is is fully enclosed. Because if if everything, if the plane of the glass is all the way back and it's one continuous porch, you know, there are two very different. Architectural treatments of the columns that don't quite jive with each other.
So if we can zoom in on the bottom left, I think Commissioner Westall, this may answer your question. So I I think to answer your question, I believe that the the windows are behind those. Chris can confirm that for me, but I believe the columns are in front and the windows are behind that.
Okay, so it's a continuous port, you know, walkway sidewalk that runs all the way through.
That that's correct.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, I I would agree, John, with your initial uh initial reaction that. You know, I, to me, there are two separate things. There's, you know, what is the base where those stone columns come down? That's that's less critical. They're already sort of a heightened architectural element that's that's treated a little bit.
I would be talking about the metal columns in the corner. They just, they were, yeah.
Yeah, they they're sort of, they're sort of spindly and secondary. So from an architectural perspective, you know. Having those, you know, not not necessarily at the same level as the stone, but having a having a a base or a plinth or something to. You know, make them a little bit more substantial, I think, is a is a really valid comment. I mean, other than that, my my thoughts on the. On the architecture that that you guys have in general done a really nice job, the the relief, the articulation and the facade. The this. You know, I I think it's, I think it's wholly appropriate. I do see the generator, since we're zoomed in here, I do see the generator quick connect spot. Is that for an a a, I didn't see a generator. You're on plan. Is this for a generator, you know, that gets brought in in case of an emergency? What's the? What is that? And is there, you know, is there provisions for a generator, a fuel field generator to be parked on site at some condition?
So that that is for, you know, long term emergencies. So we don't have, you know, as a as a practical matter, we don't install standalone generators at all of our sites. So what this what this would, what this does is it provides easy access for in the event of a long term power outage to an area. Uh, we have, uh, you know, emergency contracts with a a significant number of generators. And we'll take a look at our market area. We'll see, okay. Excuse me, how many stores in a particular area out, which stores can kind of serve as community hubs? To provide service in times of emergencies like that. So what we would do is, you know, in this. I'm guessing here, but given this is the only store in Gaithersburg and Montgomery County, this would be a good example of a of a hub store. You know, we don't have any other stores in the area that would serve this customer base. So this would most likely, you know, in event of a large snowstorm or hurricane or something along those lines where power's out for quite some time. We will bring in a trailer generator and park it on site for, you know, that that the the that the the term of that emergency. And and, you know, remove it as soon as permanent power is is uh is is restored. Now, I clearly we would follow, you know, all the local rules and regulations that would govern that. But we set up each store to be able to be quickly connected to a generator in the event it's needed.
Okay, I that make that makes perfect sense and I I don't have any concerns whatsoever with that. I was just. It jumped out of the drawing, so I was curious what the what the game plan was, so.
All right, good. Thanks for looking into that. Are any other comments from commissioners? Are you? Anything else we want to bring into the the mix? Right now, I I hear from our discussion. Two, potentially two more conditions. One deals with working with staff to resolve more location for bike parking prior to site plan. On the second is to clean up the accessory. What are we going to call this? The accessory services or something? Locations, again, work with staff to clean up the locations for those and put them in those community places. And I think enhance the the porch column basis is, for lack of a better phrase. Any anything else that that you all see or want to want to look at? Okay, so a lot of shaking heads, getting late, time to move on, I'm getting, but the vibe I'm getting from this crowd. It's a great project. Listen, I mean, again, I, these are, these are things that are just small and incremental, I think, at this point. You all have done a good job of pulling this together, so and I know you've been through a long haul with with the process itself, so. I think we appreciate you sticking with it. If there aren't any other comments, we have a recommendation from staff for approval and. Let me get my cheat sheet up here. Uh, one condition and now two more. So Jasmine, just to make sure we've got the record straight, do you want to do a quick recap of that?
Sure. So of course we have the condition number one about the retaining walls. Two is going to be about the bike racks. Now, do you want to separate the enhancing of the porch and the relocation of those into two separate conditions or into one?
I would only so that as you as you knock them off, they can be done and be done. You don't have to worry about messing, you know, mixing two fundamental different ideas.
So you're saying you combine them into one condition?
No, I I would keep them separate just so that you can you can knock them off independently because it might be a different set of constraints or or timing or whatever.
And the the condition about the bike racks and then the third is applicant to enhance porch columns on the front elevation. Final certification of the plans and then the fourth one applicant to work with staff. To clean up the location of the propane tank and ice storage in a convenient location.
Fair enough. And all three, all three of the new ones are work with staff, so we're not looking for these to come back, just just for you guys to work it out. So it's on the commissioners. Okay, applicants team, any concerns with those those conditions? Uh, no, it's sort of to confirm the the timing, the trigger in those conditions. I think for the bike parking, what I had. Announced was prior to building permit. I think for the architecture, it sounded like that was prior to plan certification.
Yeah, so the other two, so I I would say for all of them, should we do prior or final certification of plans? Of the plans.
What does that mean?
My signature. Final stamp of signature of the plans. So after. Uh, no, for the file, so the the plans that's in the part of the record, once I get it approved. Staff stamps and signs those with the application number and the date that planning commission approved.
Oh, site plan. Oh, site plan. Oh, I'm sorry. I I I didn't realize you used that terminology. No, I think we're saying for all these, this this go right up to filing for building permit because it might take that long to figure it out. And and there's no reason to to stall getting getting to building permit, you know, for for these items. I would I would concur with the chair.
And we'll note, though, that it would require them to show these locations on the site plans. We would need them resolved before we could sign the plans.
Yeah, because exactly the plans that get approved tonight, that's what applicant is going to submit for building permit. So whatever. Their building, they have to show it on the site plan and on the building elevations. So that's why we stated prior or final like signature.
Hmm, okay.
I would note that they could obviously start working with our permitting division. And submit for the building permits, so we could work on this concurrently with the applicant.
Okay, good, good enough. That's what I want to make sure is that it's not, it's not going to delay moving forward to the the permit. Okay.
No, we would just wouldn't be able to obviously issue any permits until the conditions have been resolved.
So just to clarify, what Mr. Mann said is that applicant can apply for the permit and have the city review the permit. But the certified plans that needs to be approved before the permit will be issued.
That's correct.
Great, thank you. That seems to work. All right, anything else, commissioners? All right, we've got a proposal for, we've got a recommendation for approval with now four conditions. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I moved that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the testimony in the record. And the staff report findings and recommendation grant SP eight nine eight three dash twenty twenty one. Final site plan approval and final forest conservation plan, finding it in conformance with section twenty four dash one seventy. And twenty four dash one seventy one of the city zoning ordinance with the four conditions as read into the record.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Westall.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Hi.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Hi.
And all vote I as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. A great presentation and and I know we took some time on this, but. But appreciate your attention to the detail. Uh, we're 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 very grateful for the planning commission's close review and also again for all staff's help and attention to this case as well. We're very grateful. Good, good. All right, thanks. Good luck. All right, um, commission, that takes us to from the commission. Lloyd, may I start with you?
I just want to condemn the condemn. The public works people, particularly on the leaf collection, they've been fantastic coming through the neighborhoods, picking up the leaves. We've had some major windstorms over the last couple of weeks and. Uh, they do it in a very courteous, very efficient, very effective way. So, John, please pass that on to the. To the public works people. They're doing a great job with that.
I would do that, Lloyd.
Yeah, they 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 along with the snow removing, public works in general, right? Just just always does an outstanding job. Sharon, anything tonight?
Um, Lloyd had brought up earlier that the O'Donnells, it was leveled today, right, Lloyd?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I said that nine hundred CBS locations are getting the acts according to. What I got from the bank. So I was just curious as to whether we know anymore about what's happening with the plans going forward for that CBS joint, you know?
It's moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got its building permit. It's it's. No holds barred.
Okay.
Uh, Phil, anything tonight?
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, thanks. And I don't have anything. So Greg, what do we got going from staff?
I think Jasmine's going to present the annual planner report. Um, that was in your packets. I'll let her actually go first. That's.
Okay.
Our tech team can have packet page number seven ninety five. And. That time of year again, you know, staff is here to present the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual planning report. And do the pandemic, um, staff, we didn't get a chance to present the twenty nineteen and report last year, so we for this year, we combined twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty and one report. Um, so you know, this document highlights development and planning policies that that occurred in the city. Um, I would like to thank staff from planning code administration, public works, economic development and housing community development, um, who contributed to this report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the report.
Yeah, this looks great. And just to clarify, I know you guys also prepare. The state mandated planning report, or it may have a different name, but it's. It's the more technical, more sort of data-driven document. You've done that for both years. This is more of a of a a present, a presentation style document to for the public, is that?
That's correct. So this is kind of the illustrative document, but at the end, we do include the worksheets that we submit to the planning.
Sure, okay, great. Yeah, thanks. It was a nice job. It's it's looking good. Um, and and despite everything, whatever you want to put under the umbrella of everything, it's it's been. Still a fairly robust couple of years of of planning and development and progress for the city. So that's that's really, really nice news.
Thank you.
Are you putting this on the website for for on the on the the planning page?
Yes, that's correct. So I will have our tech, our web team put this on the website.
Good, great. All right, thank you. Very nice. Any anything else from the commission on on the planning report?
No, great job and and thanks to staff for all your hard work on this.
Absolutely.
Next year, you'll see the twenty twenty one annual report.
Um, wait a minute, I'm having a trouble, I'm having trouble here. Hang on a second. My packet doesn't have the report handy, so I can't reference something. I'll do it tomorrow. I'll dig it up tomorrow. It's getting late. It's posted, but it's not in the agenda packet, I guess. Is that right? What's that?
I didn't see it either.
Okay, I'll I'll. I'll text you tomorrow or I'll email you tomorrow, just a minor thing, but it looks good. Let's see, where are we? John, did you have something tonight?
Well. I was just going to remind you. No, it's fine. John can go first if he wants. Monday on December sixth, you guys, there's a joint public hearing scheduled on the APFO related to the schools. Requirements and the fee that's going to that we're that's going to be established with that. And then just a reminder that we only have one meeting in December and the next meeting will be January fifth.
January, that would be twenty twenty two, wouldn't it?
Twenty twenty two, that's correct.
Can you believe it? All right, thanks. Um, okay, John, anything tonight?
And, yes. I just wanted to give you an update on the strategic plan process, you know. Our new city manager, Tanisha Bryley, has initiated a completely revamp of the street strategic plan. And we, I think I already reported that we had a kickoff in September with the senior leadership team and the mayor and council. And then the senior leadership team had an all-day retreat on November ninth. And we have now established. A new vision for the city. Well, it's, all of this is contingent on the mayor and council approval, but. Um, our vision right now, our our draft vision is Gaithersburg is the best of America, a city for today and tomorrow. It is welcoming a vibrant place, supported by responsive, compassionate and responsible leadership. That includes you all. That brings people together and allows our community to flourish. So and we have. Nine outcome areas that we are going to be meeting on. We have teams. Uh, staff teams that are composed of SLT managers and other staff members. That are going to be meeting next week to talk about safe and welcoming community, economic development and redevelopment. Environmental stewardship and sustainability, equitable outcomes, fiscal responsibility, viable transportation options. Distinguished leadership. Great, that includes you guys. Great places to work, excellent city services and facilities. So it's 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 a great program that we're working on. And we, the ultimate outcome should be awesome. So that's my report for tonight.
Great, thank you. What is that plan now out there or is that still considered draft?
It's still all in draft and it actually won't be approved by the mayor and council till June, so.
Okay.
Um, and and in fact, there's a two-day retreat in January. Um, SLT and mayor and council toward the end of January to to kind of finalize it.
Hey, John, can I ask you a question about the infrastructure bill that passed Congress? Are we going to get any pieces of that and is that going to be incorporated at any point in the master plan?
Yeah, I wish Rob Robinson was here to report on that because actually. It's likely that the county will get a big portion. We will benefit from it. I'm not sure we're going to actually get a piece of piece of it. But Rob would be able to report on that better.
Sometime in the future, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. John, how's like Boris Malloy?
So, you know, as you know, the master plan amendment was approved in August and we're still excited about it. Um, we've had a bunch of meetings with different prospective developers. Nothing conclusive at this point, but there's a lot of it. Nothing conclusive at this point, but there's a lot of interest and um, I think, I, you know, I think the the master plan amendment is going to be a positive influence for that redevelopment and and we're very hopeful.
I remember the the point I was going to make, Jasmine, I'm sorry to double back, um, about the planning report, and it was the CPSC site park, that moved forward, right? But did, I don't remember seeing it in the report, but maybe I missed it. Just tell me it's there and I missed it. That's fine.
It's actually started construction.
Yeah, yeah. So the the planning and all got, they got kind of completed in that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty era, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, but I I didn't see a mention of that under under the initiatives, but I might have completely overlooked it. So if it's there, I apologize. I missed it. If it's not, we can put it in twenty twenty one and see, oh, by the way. All right, anything else, anybody? Everybody's looking kind of bleary eyed. This is one of the latest meetings we've had in years. Almost something to celebrate. And Sharon, you got to be here for it.
Yay.
All right.
I'll see you guys on Monday, I guess, too.
Yes, indeed. All right, if there's nothing else, everybody have a good rest of your week. Thanks for being here tonight, and we are adjourned.